So, candidates, in 90 seconds, please state your name, office you are seeking, and then answer the following question. What do you think are the most important solutions at the county level to address sea level rise and flooding? Do you have a mic question? Start with the left right.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Pete Clark. I'm a candidate for Orange County mayor. So you know, I just left an event with both of the other candidates. I did choose to come here. The most important thing we can do as a community is to see how we grow. We have areas that are not too conducive to managing the water that comes from storms. We have areas that are overbuilt. We have aging infrastructure. So at the end of the day, what we need to look at is how that we can manage water and we can manage in a proper way. We need to manage in a proper way. We have some pretty significant drainage systems in Orange County. We have pipes that run from San Lake Road to Disney area out to almost to Clermont moving water or using the water for irrigation and so forth. So we're trying to manage water appropriately, but the other thing we need to do is make sure that we have impure water bodies. We're going to make sure we're going to correct that. We're going to protect our streams. We're going to protect our rivers. We're going to protect our lakes. Hopefully I'll get a chance to discuss some of the things I've done as a county commissioner. I'm the current county commissioner in District 3, and I look forward to continuing as mayor. And I think some of the questions will allow me to give you some more insight into what I've done and what I'll do in the future. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Ballinger. I'm a county commissioner in District 4, and I had the courage to come out here and face all of you today to talk about rate rise and level loss. I mean, I say everything that Pete just said. I don't need to say any more than he answered it very well. No, when I look at what an office can do from county position, some of the things I think we lack is the preventative and the preparation. In District 4, we have so much growth that we can control that. We cannot allow it to keep going and growing in different directions, taking down the natural absorption of water like trees and sprawling into areas that where we shouldn't go into, like the Split Oaks area. We need to make sure that we maintain those areas. Preventative measures being put in place by the county commissioners always at one point. And then the other side is the preparation in case of, because there's no doubt about it, we have a problem. And those that don't want to face the facts of global warming, global warming is here, and we have to face the facts that it's here. And what can we do to prevent and to prepare for such a disaster because hurricanes are getting stronger, flooding is getting more often, and our natural vegetation is going away? I have over 20 years' experience in emergency management, and I understand things, what happens in flooding, what can we do differently? We need to look at how we're building the houses, where we're building the houses. We need to look at what we're taking down and what areas. We need to look at the drainage system that we currently have. All those things can be looked at from a local level. There's a lot of other things that fall into place with FEMA, and believe it or not, with emergency management areas that I've worked in, I know that FEMA has a lot of money and a lot of capabilities.
Great, thank you. Next question, go from right to left. Want a minute to respond? What role should Orange County play in community education on sea level rise? Is there an education program you would champion?
Fortunately, I was in here for all the people who had a chance to answer this question. But from my position, and a lot of people answer, make sure our children are educated well and things they can do, and they're the rising future of who we are and what we're going to do. However, right now is the problem. People in the communities don't understand what part they can play. They don't understand that everything they do in their household, every car, every trip they take, has an effect on our environment, has an effect on the rising levels. Those where we need to start education areas, in our town hall meetings, in our community HOA meetings, we need to start talking about these issues. Only way we're going to get ahead of it is those that can take effect now and making an effective change now, making them more educated, more informed. I didn't know everything I know now about rising levels until I got going down this road through emergency management, and now I consider myself well informed, and I know how to ask the right questions to people that are the experts.
When I would sit at the table with our youngest with his science course, in the science course of the weather and going through the cycle, the rain cycle and so forth, and I'm sitting there thinking that he didn't seem too interested, and I tried to make him interested in it because it's so critical that you know how these things work. And I think now he does realize it's something that is probably tough. You know, we have a board here, Eric's been on it, the Soil and Water Conservation Board, that yearns to do education, and we have a solid EPD department in Orange County. I mean, I wouldn't say they're second to none, that we should put together a program that maybe could go into the schools and augment what they learned in those science courses to give them a real feel for what's happened to this world, what's happened to this planet. My undergrad degree is marine biology, and so I'm an unambassed environmentalist, and it's something that's kind of courting me. I also have a master's degree from Rollins, I'm back from Rollins, and FSU as well, so okay, we're good. But public health and management, public health and education and management from Rollins. And like my friend here in the military, I was involved in disaster management, but also 17 years in Orange County disaster management. Mitigation is the key, the proper planning, except there's no time. Mitigation is the key. Free bird, okay.
I was waiting for someone to say something.
I had to.
Okay, we have a couple of questions from the audience, so I'm going to read the first one. Can you have a minute to respond? One minute to respond? How can Orange County prepare for the potential mass migration from coastal areas of Florida as a result of sea level rise and storm surge? And then they added, their areas of concern include affordable housing, infrastructure, and school overcrowding.
Those would be my concerns too. You know, we saw a kind of micro version of that from the island after the hurricane, and it was daunting as a county commissioner and working with the board, how do you address these issues? It was from an affordable housing standpoint, if you go to ocfl.net, our website, you can pull down the Affordable Housing Task Force report we accepted on July 31st. I think in there you'll find a very solid launching plan for what we can do to start addressing the affordable and workforce housing issues. Things that we can do internally in Orange County for our own processes, but also some really great ideas how we can bring in partners from the outside and work to kind of mitigate the cost and especially to mitigate the timeframe. The key to it is identified properties that would be used for workforce, I like to call it workforce housing, but affordable housing, can be used for that type of housing, and do infill projects. I was working the city core out, so by the time we get to where we have enough homes and we're not impacting the rural areas of Orange County. I voted twice to not expand into the East Orange County Atlantic Projects, and I'm proud of those votes that we will not go across the ECON, and my time is up, and we'll stop in the ECON.
Some of the things in mitigating the inevitable, what's going to happen with sea level rising is, and I kind of touched on it a little bit in the beginning, in District 4, if you're not familiar with District 4, that's the Lake Nona, the Avalon, the Waterford, Summer Hunters Creek, and the Conway area, a lot of growth. And if you look at it in a country, in a statewide, it's one of the fastest growing counties in the country. And that means that we're growing without any consideration of how we can mitigate the sea level rise and how we can mitigate some of the things that we're taking out that are, like I said before, our natural absorption products, taking away the trees, taking away the shrubs, moving our land and housing further, closer and closer to the waterways, which we're going to create the problem ourselves then. We're going to have homes around low-level areas, and then we're going to be looking at ways to now move those homes. Affordable housing, we definitely want to make sure that affordable housing is built as sturdy and necessary as it is in regular homes. Any other home that you have that is a higher value. There's no reason we can't create more affordable housing for those folks that move here, those folks that already live here. In other cities that I've been in, in other countries that I've been in, there's a requirement to have a certain amount of affordable housing in a neighborhood as you develop that neighborhood. So if you're building $250,000 homes, you have to put a percentage of affordable homes in this same area.
Thank you, thank you for your answer. We have another question from the audience, and this was actually submitted to be asked for the District 3 panel, but we're also asked, they also asked me to be asked to you as well. So please state your position in respect to preserving ecologically sensitive land within the watershed of the ECON River.
I'd love to answer that one. Again, I voted down both Lake Pickle developments. We're trying right now to negotiate to purchase some really prime property on the ECON. Hopefully we turn that into a nature preserve. I did the work to create rural enclaves for them in Orange County. We have some residents back there, one of the enclaves we created. And all of this, what all of this does, it preserves, it preserves the wetlands, it preserves the ecosystem around the rivers, especially the ECON. And we have ECON, of course we have ECON protection zone, but I don't think it probably did extend quite far enough. And when we look at East Orange County and what's happened out there, and what's the pressures to build, 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 you know, we need to make sure that that doesn't happen, that doesn't happen. And as your county mayor, I would certainly make sure that I would do everything in my power to not let it happen. And as one who had control of the agenda, I think you probably have a pretty good shot at it. But what Kevin was saying, especially down the east and southeast, really great planning went into effect for the innovation wave, but what has happened, the environmental policies were very solid, a lot of the transportation policies were solid, but annexations has crippled it. And annexations occur when property owners get a better deal from municipality than they do from the county. And it's a shame, because when a project came to us not long ago to the board, two people came to discuss it and to question us about it, both of them from Lake Mary Jane Alliance, and both of them spoke in support of the project, because everything had been done according to the policies of good development, and I will give them affirmative.
And I want to take my 30 seconds back on that last question too. I wrote down on my notes here mitigation and then it was migration. As we're looking at people migrating to this area as a result of whatever's happening in their area, one of my experiences, and I know that Pete alluded to it, I have 22 years of service, and part of that was in the emergency management side. So we understand when you're bringing people to another area, how do you accommodate those people coming to your area and have affordable housing? Some of the things we want to make sure of is that District 4 is not the only district in this county. We have to have jurisdictional relationships with every district in the county, and also have the relationships with outside the central Florida area. We can go to Jacksonville. We have to know what's going on in all the area in Florida as people migrate to this area to ensure we give the right advice, and we don't overcrowd one area, we don't overtax one area. There's so many problems that are going to be a result of not properly placing people that that's going to be another county that's going to have tax monies and other costs involved.
Thank you. Okay, another audience question. How do you intend to address and advocate for climate mitigation and adaptation strategies in an increasingly polarized political climate?
The beauty of local government, we're talking local government here, I'm talking about the polarization that occurs up the food chain. The beauty of local government is we can avoid those pitfalls and pratfalls. You know, when we meet as the board of county commissioners, we're not meeting as ours and these, we're meeting as your commissioners. It is one body. Any of you can come down on any Tuesday, talk to us for three minutes during our open meeting, where we have public discussion, and change our minds. You can change our minds about something. So, local government, when we're presented with these issues, it's incumbent on us to work with our city partners, with our other councils, and with our surrounding counties to do it in a non-confrontational manner, a non-political manner, in a manner that really is prescriptive for you, you know, the residents, to get this done right. I mean, to be polarized at the local level is just ridiculous. You know, when you wake up in the morning, you turn on the lights, and the water runs, and you have a road to ride on, that's your local government? It doesn't matter who's in charge as far as the letter after their name, it matters who's in charge, not who's need, you know, as your mayor, to get these things accomplished. But you know, we need to leave that out of the equation, we need to work on these projects together, and that's the way we will do it. And we will do it from a joint planning situation, joint planning with other communities, and I'm done.
And that's kind of what I was alluding to on the last question when I came back and talked about the migration of people, is that we as a community, we as a people, have to understand that we're not in these battles by ourselves. If we don't learn to cooperate and create jurisdictional agreements, and I came from the DC area seven years ago, I lived here in Orlando in the 80s when we had orange trees everywhere. We didn't have some of the problems we have now because of the different overbuilding of our areas. So having the agreements in DC, we made sure the Arlington area, the DC area, the Maryland area, we all knew that we could come together in cases of need, whatever disaster may be. There was always agreements there, and there was always agreements locally. DC government operates a lot different than what our local Orlando government operates, but it's no reason in the world we'd have any polarization where no one can talk to each other, get the same understanding, and come to an equal agreement for the betterment of the people.
Okay, thank you. Next question is a non-audience question. What is your opinion on offshore drilling or drilling in the Gulf Coast Atlantic, considering that what happens in the Gulf and the Atlantic will have a direct impact on Florida?
Can I say no to offshore drilling? And I hope everybody heard no, I would not go for offshore drilling in the Florida area. I did a contract in Trinidad, Tobago, and worked with Venezuela. Both of them told me, they said, you all do not have an oil shortage, we can give you all the oil at the price you want to get without any problems at all. No reason for us to create something that we don't have. Our tourist industry, our waterways depend on clean, fresh water. If we had anything happen to our waters, it would ruin the fishing industry, and it would ruin the tourist industry. And we have to make sure we don't do that. There's no reason to. There's plenty, plenty of oil available. I don't even talk about Saudi Arabia, Saudi Arabia, plenty of oil. Everyone has it. We can get it whenever we need it.
Well, I agree with your stance on no offshore drilling. I mean, it's just such a fragile ecosystem, and you know, it's like fracking in Florida, you know, why would anybody think that would actually be a good idea? You know, it's just, it makes no sense. And I've shepherded through the resolution in Orange County to be in for the anti-fracking resolution, and I was very proud of that. Took a little work with some of my commissioners, but you know, we got there, and I think that Eric was behind me with a cattle prod, saying, you know, get this thing done. But it's those kinds of things that we need to pay particular attention to. I mean, the fact of the matter is, oil is a declining commodity in this country. Every day, we use less and less, which is a great thing. More, we're going more to cars that don't require that much oil, we're going to higher efficiency cars, we're going to more solar, you know, solar, 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 so that we don't have so expensive a bunch of energy generating power. So it's a declining need, and we're weaning ourselves off of it. This is difficult when you have such mammoth corporations doing this. But what I look to is how individually we can do it, is our own small part of the equation, how do we preserve and conserve? And part of that is going solar, making sure that we're buying cars that can get good rates, get really good gas mileage. And people ask me, would you do the six cent gas tax? I said, well, why would we do it? Because you don't get much money out of it, you know, it's just a declining need, and that is really great news. So why go for something you don't need?
Okay, thank you. Next question. What is your single most significant personal or professional accomplishment?
Look the developers dead in the eye and look against their projects. I think that's a watershed moment, because what you're also doing is you're preserving the lives and the lifestyle of many, many residents. And really the good side of that is you are protecting, you're protecting the environment from overbuild and from sprawl. Back when I worked for the county many years ago when I was commissioner, I was involved in Preservation 2000, where we bought Split Oak Forest and we bought another preservation lands, you know, and I'm certainly against running a turnpike through Split Oak Forest, and I'm very adamant about that. So I'm proud of the days we spent purchasing these properties now that are just so precious to the community. Like Split Oak, and some of the ones out east, especially where the Biflo, I mean, the Christmas Park was out there, it's such a heritage. So I'm proud of preserving properties, I'm very proud of not voting for sprawl, I'm very proud of the rural enclaves we created, I'm really proud of protecting our 14 rural settlements in Orange County. I don't know if you realize we have 14 rural settlements that have very strict rules of what you can do and can't do. And we continue to preserve these, we continue to protect them, and we do, I hate the term smart growth, we've been doing that for years, and it hasn't been very smart, but really good growth.
Okay, I currently work for Orange County School Board, and I have a department of about 1,150 people. And the reason I say that, because it's the custodians that work for every school in our district. And one of the things, three of the things that we've done most recently, one week we headed up the recycle program. We're making sure that recycling is happening at every school, some have really championed and doing it really well. We've created more green programs than has ever been created in Orange County Public Schools through that department since the existence of Orange County Public Schools. We were recognized nationally just last year as a national contestant for green programs. That is taking chemicals out of some of the type of cleaning processes, using less water, and using equipment that takes less energy and less efforts on that part. The other is I also program, run one of the programs, the LEED program, where we're making sure that we're creating more green efficiencies in all of Orange County Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question. To what extent do you feel federal resources and policies are necessary to support local resiliency initiatives?
A lot of times, when you get large funding, it's going to come from the federal side in most cases. And as we lean on the federal dollars to support our local initiatives, that's where the source of monies begin. And if we're looking at preventing any measures from rising waters, or hurricanes, or floods, and you involve FEMA, and I have personal relationship with FEMA, where I realize the only difference in getting the money from FEMA and not getting money from FEMA from the federal funds is how much paperwork you're really willing to endure. They will beat you up with the paperwork and the requirements, but if you stay steady to the course, and as a county commissioner, I would help constituents, I would help our county follow that paperwork rule, follow the endurance it takes to beat out FEMA to get that money. Money's there, but you've got to have the ability to write your processes, make sure that you're answering all the questions, and go over and over with the paperwork again and again.
I think FEMA still owes us money from Charlie, but they do actually. You know, when the federal government is so nice and kind to return our money to us that we send up there, it comes with so many strings attached, and it comes with so many reductions as it comes down the pipeline, you know, this department gets a little share, this department gets a little share, our comptroller gets a little share. By the time it gets to the point where you need it, you know, it's been probably decreased by 10, 20, 30 percent, which I think is just, that's a crying shame, you know, because it's our money coming back to us to address the problem. So what I try to do is not put the feds or the state in the equation initially, and let's see from the standpoint of locally what we can accomplish, what we can do, and then let's use those resources to bolster what we're trying to attempt. Sometimes we may need those desperately, but you can't count on them. And I think that's probably the other shame, is that you really can't count on your money coming back to you to do the things you need to do in your community. And those are things that need to be fixed. Back many, many years ago, government, when we went to block grants, everybody thought it was the end of the world, but actually it wasn't. That more money came down without strings attached to it, and more good things could be done. Those days should return to some degree, especially when we're facing these changes in the climate and the issues that we're talking about.
Great, thank you. Another audience question. With more efficient cars and decreasing revenue from the gas tax, what tax would you advocate increasing or creating?
For transportation, everybody says we need to dedicate funding to social links, that's a good one for a tax, we need a tax for this, a tax for that. I think we have a revenue source already in Orange County for us to move links, for us to move Sun Rail, for us to move projects that will create a transportation system that will lead us into the future, and that funding source is the expressway system. Every day, there are millions and billions of dollars of tolls that are collected. And if you go to some of the northern states and other states with extensive expressway systems and transit systems, that's part of the revenue plan, is our those tolls. And so what I plan, what I plan to do is initially is to see what steps we need to go through, what hoops we need to go through. I'm sure it's going to take some legislative initiatives, and as a mayor, I will sit on the expressway authorities, so at least I'll have a seat at the table. If you're not at the table, you're dinner, so at least we'll be at the table and have those discussions, because the 408 is a cash cow, the entire system, it's been there for 40 years or whatever. I think it's time to return some of it for us to create a transportation system that works for the 21st century, 22nd century, for you, the young folks, the kind of folks that really want to use those kinds of systems, and for the kids coming out of college and trade schools, that their parents want them to be here, not live with them, but be here, something that they can use.
Thank you. As I look at ways to save money, and rather than, I wouldn't sit before you now and say let's raise the tax, so let's put taxes toward anything else and what they've currently been used for. However, I'm looking at more efficient ways of what we're doing business now. When you look at CFIX, and I've gone to their meetings, and I've listened to how much revenue is generated in that area, and I agree with Pete on that, that there's ways to use that money more efficiently to improve what we're currently doing. When I look at the rail system here, and I call it the metro system in the DC area, our rail system, when I sat down and talked to the folks in charge there, was what we're waiting until the people start using it more before we create more service stops. I said, you put in the car before the horse. I said, they're not going to use it until they know we go to work at 8 o'clock, get off at 4 o'clock and get home, or if they get off at 9 o'clock, they can get home, or they get off at 10 o'clock, they can get home. That will reduce our gas use, that way increase our efficiency in transportation, and then we won't need as much gas. We won't worry about having to gas tax so much, we can get our rail system working in an efficient manner that allows us to get around town, whether you're a young adult, whether you're a millennial, whether you just don't want to get on and drive your car every day. That's the answer to our system and not raising any gas standards.
Okay, thank you. Next question. In what ways is sea level rise related to human impact on the environment?
Not sure I quite understand the relationship between the human impact and sea level rise, unless we're, the dangers to the people?
We can interpret it.
Okay, that's well answered. Sea level rise and the human impact, we have to be prepared for stronger hurricanes coming through, we have to be prepared for more flooding coming through, and in Florida, we have a lot of water. There are lakes everywhere, the borders are surrounded by heavy waters, and if we don't make some changes right now, the human impact's going to be that lower-level homes are going to be destroyed. And I listened to a question earlier that talked about lower-level homes in low-level line areas, people moving, so some of those homes have been there for 100 years. I was down in New Orleans when they had plenty of villages and parishes destroyed because people were there 100 years. They didn't make that choice to be there. A lot of that was inherited from the people, the family members before. So when you're in those areas, the impact that it'll be on the human environment is that they will be flooded out, people will be losing their homes, and we'll have to find out what ways we can mitigate those damages, what other activities are in place.
I love New Orleans, but I would recommend nobody build a city below sea level. Generally doesn't work out too well. But you know, when we're talking about the human impact, and the reason we're having discussion is the human impact. You know, there's a lot of humans on this planet, and these humans consume, consume, consume many, many things, and many things that have caused issues with our environment, it causes issues with the ozone, and it's just the number of humans on the planet and how we conduct ourselves. And that's the human element that is part of the cause, and part of the issue that we're going to face, of course, is what Kevin is saying, is that you're going to have more flooding on the coastlines, you're going to have homes that if they weren't built properly now, they will be rebuilt properly because they will be washed away during a hurricane. But we need to be a little smarter, you know, how we continue to build, and we need to probably look at building a little further away from the coast. And you know, so you're not right on the beach, so you've got to walk you 500 yards, you know, is that a big deal? No, that's not a big deal, you can do some exercise anyway. But so the human element is what's got us here, and usually there's a cost effect, and the cause is the humans, the effect is going to be the effect on the humans and how we live and how we... how we live and how we move into the future.
Okay, thank you. Our final question for the panel. As part of your plans to protect Florida from climate change impacts, how do you plan to involve communities in decision-making, especially our most underserved, as we build a resilient Florida for current and future generations?
You know, that is a really good question, and I say that honestly because communities and neighborhoods are, they're the cement that holds us together, I mean, when you go to the neighborhoods. We're going to do something called empowerment zones in Orange County, we're going to go into those areas that have the most need, and we're going to put resources into fundamentally change, change the circumstance. I heard some earlier discussion about Hurricane Donna, and, you know, that was a long, long time ago, and then what happened after other hurricane. But we didn't change the circumstance for those, where those folks live, so we need to go in and change that circumstance, and that means looking at the housing stock, looking at the job availability, looking at what surrounds them, those things we take for granted, can you get to a grocery store? And those are what we're going to look at, is empowerment zones, so that we can start fundamentally changing those neighborhoods, changing the chance for the kids in those neighborhoods to succeed. That's going to be a wise investment, I believe, in your tax dollars when we go in there and really start doing this at that level. And what it will do, you know, then you get crime reduction, you get all the things you really want to happen in a great community. And this is a great community, people are moving here from all over the world, and that's part of our problem is they won't stop moving here, and we have to be ready for them, we have to be ready for them, and I think that's going to be one of the huge tasks for the next mayor. I surround myself with people, I surround myself with people who want to work, want to get the job done, and if I am your next mayor, I hope we get a list here, because you guys are the kind of people who want to be there, want to help, want to work to get the job done, and want to make this a better place to live, and I will remember the bell this time, thank you.
You know, one of the things I don't think we do well, and not just in Orlando, but this is all across the country, is we have to listen to the indicators that happen in any natural disaster. We recognize that, we had elderly homes that got flooded, and breathing equipment, and respiratory equipment, and heart equipment didn't work, and this is in places of rest or homes where we're supposed to be taking care of people. So, I would say that what we have to do, and the impacts we need to look at, is talk to all the communities, find out what impacts they've had in the past, start mitigating some of the issues they've had, so that we can not repeat the same mistakes that we've repeated before. And that doesn't happen often. We happen, it happens, we fix it, we go away from it, and we don't go back to say, "Did we really fix that problem for recurring again?" No, we just bought a new generator, we put generators in schools. Is that mitigating the problem, is that really get to the point where now we can have more sustainability? Our problem is I don't think we've reached sustainable efforts in what we do. We put corrective actions in place, but not the corrective measures that have sustainability, and I'm not going to have the bell ring on me.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience, please thank our candidates.